I'd like to call to order the regular Board of Education meeting, March 1st, 2023. Can everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mission statement: We are committed to academic achievement and success for all students in a safe environment. In partnership with families in our community, our mission is to promote confidence, inspire a passion for learning, and to prepare our students to become responsible global citizens. May I have a motion to approve the revised agenda?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Appointment of new Board of Education trustee. So we have Mr. Dr. Sergey Koifman, who has been asked to rejoin the school board. He had served previously, and he's graciously agreed, which we appreciate. May I have a motion to appoint Mr. Dr. Koifman?
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Koifman, if you could please stand for the oath of office and recite the oath that's on the table.
I solemnly swear that I will support a constitution of the United States of America and the constitution of the state of New York, that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Board of Trustees of Monroe Woodbury Central School District for the remainder of 2022-2023 school year according to the best of my ability.
Thank you. Next up, I have a memorial resolution. May I have a motion to adopt the memorial resolution for Maura Burke? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will now read the resolution. Unanimously adopted by the Monroe Woodbury Board of Education at its regular meeting today, March 1st, 2023, whereas Ms. Maura Burke was employed by the Monroe Woodbury Central School District as an elementary teacher. Her employment with the district began September 1993. She retired in June of 2015. And whereas through her dedication to the district, Maura has touched the lives of many individuals in our district. It is hereby resolved that the Board of Education, on behalf of the entire district, extends in memoriam its appreciation and gratitude, as well as its sincere condolences to the Burke family. As the above resolution is adopted by the Board, it will become part of the official historical records of the district and will serve as a memorial of lasting all time. Thank you. Update on questions or comments raised from interested citizens from the last meeting. We just had the mayor, who came in and gave some nice comments about the children and our music programs and theater, so I don't have anything there. And then, any questions or comments from interested citizens? Okay. Then Patrick, you are up with your budget presentation. Wow, Patrick, you really brought your crew tonight.
Yeah, we got the whole team with us.
You learned from the CNI guys after last month.
Ah.
The last two meetings.
Reinforcements.
That makes sense.
Okay, so, good evening, everyone. I'd like to just take this opportunity to thank the Board of Education for allowing us to present to you this evening. So this kicks off our budget presentation process. It's our first budget presentation meeting. We're going to be covering the non-instructional operational components of the school budget. On March 15th, we're going to be covering personnel and human resources and employee benefits. And on March 29th, we're going to be covering the instructional budgets. And finally, the budget presentation process will conclude with the superintendent's budget recommendation on April 12th. So with me this evening is Dr. Bargav Vias, Assistant Superintendent for Compliance and Information Systems, Ms. Dawn Russell, our Transportation Director, Mr. Andre Rudiak, our Director of Facilities, and Mr. Joseph Tripodo, our Director for Safety and Security. So we're going to cover essentially their respective areas of the budget. And before we do that, I'd like to provide sort of the, you know, the big picture budget presentation, some of the things that are impacting the budget. We like to cover state aid and the tax cap, and then get into the individual operational areas. So this is very much what I just said. It's sort of like the agenda for the evening. We're going to do the budget overview, the tax cap, state aid. Then we're going to cover buildings and grounds, safety and security, central printing, data processing, computer assist instruction, library media, and transportation. And actually, before we get started, I just want to take a moment and thank my Secretary Kathy Fico for all her assistance in putting the budget together. I also like to thank all the business office staff, some of which are here tonight, that helped us get to this point. So we're not done, really. This is sort of, I would say, the halfway point in the budget development process, but all that staff has been really instrumental in getting us here. Okay? Bear with us for a moment. We're having a little technical difficulty. Okay. Back in business. For the time being.
It's not up on the TV in front of us.
Give us a second, Patrick, because we can't see the screen.
Okay. It's okay behind you.
That's a nice way of saying turn around.
The big screen is okay. Little one, I guess not.
It showed up for a second and then disappeared.
That's always the fickle part of this system, right? The TV.
I do have a hard copy.
I like to look at it on the TV.
I'm just letting you know there's a hard copy.
Let's try and make it work the way it's supposed to.
It's true.
It's okay.
We could just turn around.
We have, it's okay. Now that looks like a horror movie.
It's a horror movie where you go into the-
The Ring.
The Ring, right?
I know my horror movies.
Me too.
You're it?
Yes, I am a big horror movie person.
Well, we gotta talk.
Yeah. This is The Ring. We're all gonna go into this dark-
So why don't we have Mr. Cahill just move forward that way, because so you have time-
Yeah, the audience can see this, and you folks have the handout, so.
We'll just turn to me, too, we're on the right there.
There you go. Okay, so we covered the agenda for this evening. Let's get right into it. So, as I said previously, I'd like to sort of do a big budget overview, talk about some of the challenges, some of the developments in the budget, some of the things that are impacting our budget for the upcoming year. And obviously, we're talking about the 23-24 general fund budget. So inflationary pressures continue. We talked about this last year at this time. Unfortunately, you know, generally economists, a lot of people thought the inflation would abate. It has not happened. There are several areas within the budget presentation where we're using a CPI factor, and a lot of times, that's about 8%. So that fluctuates. But it's continuing to impact our budget. Our projections for next year would be for increases in materials and supplies, commodities. You'll see that over the course of the presentation, particularly with utilities. The oil, natural gas is up, and we're seeing, you know, pressure, inflationary pressure in services as well, particularly the construction trades. Contract transportation, similar conversation last year at this time, continued growth in that area of the budget. We're projecting both growth in the price, so we talk about that, the cost per unit, if you will, and that's adjusted by a CPA factor that we're projecting, and growth in the enrollment area. So it's approximately 15% projected growth in enrollment. So the quantity that we buy is increasing, and the actual price of the transportation is increasing as well. Health insurance premium increase of about 4.5%. So initially, the plan was requesting about a 7% increase. We were able to knock that down to 4.5%. Just to put it in perspective, NISHIP, which is another major health plan, that's the health plan that's used by the state and also local governments and other school districts, they're projecting an increase around 12.5% for individual and 15% for family. So the OU health plan, which we're part of, the consortium of 20 districts, is doing a really good job with cost containment. And in fact, it's, we're not diminishing benefits. In a lot of cases, we're enhancing the benefits. But again, to give you an idea, I like to put the individual premium amounts on there. So for next year, the individual premium is $13,800. The two-person, so this, you remember last year, the health plan went to a three-tier system. Two-person is $29,892, and the family plan is $33,768. So expensive benefit that we provide to people. And, you know, it's one of those things, health services inflation is growing everywhere, you know, and we're not immune to that, nor is our health plan. OU BOSI's capital projects, we've talked a lot about that. It's impacting next year's budget. The actual amount is $940,000. We were talking about being over a million, so based on the way they're rolling that out, it's a little bit less than that. But it's close to a million-dollar impact on our budget, budget-to-budget impact. The ERS employer contribution rate, so ERS, it's the local and state employee retirement system. That's the system that non-certificated employees are a part of. So basically, that's, you know, all those that are not instructional, not teachers, et cetera. So we're seeing a rate increase from about 13% to 15% for next year, and that would equate to a little over $700,000 budget-to-budget increase for us. Fortunately, TRS, their rates are flat, but there is a slight increase based on the growth in the payroll. So it's two factors, right? If your payroll grows and the rate is the same, you're still going to pay more. So, you know, in the case of ERS, it's a rate increase and growth in payroll, so it's a little bit, you know, it's higher, for sure. So the good news in the budget, the state aid changes, so this is the final year for the foundation aid phase-ins. We've talked a lot about that. It's a three-year phase-in. Governor Hochul has supported that and continued that. So we're seeing an increase in our state aid for 23-24. And I have, you know, a little caveat there, but what about next year, right? And so, the last two years, we've had, based on inflationary pressures and some of the other things we're going to talk about tonight, some budget increases that were covered by this increase in state aid. But the idea is, you know, what are we going to do when the phase-in, which will be next year, is over? And we can't expect that sort of relatively large increase in state aid. So, you know, we continue to look for ways to cost contain within the district and ways to, you know, I like to say, maximize our return in investment. Final bullet, expiring contract with the MWTA, so that's the teachers and the teaching assistants. So, you know, I have high confidence that we'll have a contract settled by the end of the year, but it creates some uncertainty this time of year because the contract is not settled as far as, you know, the budget. A little bit of risk is what it is, though. So I just wanted to throw this slide up here. This is an estimate of the budgetary cost drivers in next year's budget. So these are things, some of which are fairly solid, others are still in flux. But overall, I would say this is an estimate. The budget is by no means finished at this point. We still have some work to do. And I won't go through everything, but I'll just start out, the first two rows here, UPK, GF is general fund, portion, $400,000, guidance and psychology, or I'm sorry, psychologist salaries, $463,000. So those are expenses in the budget, which we're covering with ARPA money, the federal money that we've been receiving. And so, we heard a lot about the fiscal cliff that everyone would be facing. And so, we're shifting some of those expenses back into our general fund budget. So those are, you know, the first couple of items on there. The tutoring set aside, I'm going to talk more about that. That has to do with a portion of our foundation aid increase, which we're going to really get into in a moment. I know everyone's really looking forward to that. But there's a portion, a carve-out of the ordinary increase in foundation aid that we're supposed to be using for, they call it high-impact tutoring. So it's one-on-one tutoring with students in grades three through eight, and there's not a lot of details. There's some details, but it's a little unusual because foundation aid is general aid, and normally, strings are not attached to it, like this. When you prescribe how money has to be used, it's more like a grant program. You have a specific use for it, or it's like an expenditure-based aid that we will talk about in a minute, too. So foundation aid is not like that. It's supposed to be free and clear state aid, general aid. And unfortunately, they're taking a portion of it, and they're saying you must do these things with it. And perhaps the most important element of this is that they're saying it must supplement, not supplant. And what that means is it has to be in addition to what you already do. You cannot take something you're already doing and just saying, eh, we're going to cover that with this tutoring set aside. It's supposed to be something that is new. There's a little bit of, I don't know, I think flexibility there, because there could be things that you wouldn't have ordinarily done. But it's something that we're watching, and it's something to be, something new, and it's something to be a bit concerned about. Ordinary salary increase is about $3 million. I talked about TRS, we talked about ERS. FICA is the Social Security and Medicare, it's payroll taxes, so that is 7.65%. Health insurance, about $1.3 million increase. The BOSI's capital project, we touched on. The bus purchase transfer to capital. So unlike other years, not last year, we didn't, we're not proposing a proposition for buses separately. What we're proposing is to include that in the general fund budget. And so, when the voters approve the general fund budget, they've approved the bus purchase. And we do that with a transfer to the capital fund, and that's actually how we buy buses, because it's a capital expenditure. That's how we do capital projects. So that's what that $1.5 million is. The contract transportation, Ms. Russell will talk about, we've touched on it. And then the buildings and grounds utility increases. So overall, that's a $13.6 million increase in terms of the things that are driving the budget higher potentially for next year. So let's talk about the tax cap for a couple of minutes. So the MW 2% tax cap for next year, I can go through all the steps. Maybe I'll just touch on some of the highlights instead of going through all the steps. So the basic formula, it's a multi-step process, about eight steps, and it's basically a limit on the growth in property taxes or the tax levy, right, for local governments in New York State. So it's not just applicable to us, it's applicable to county, town, village. You can override, in other words, if you need to override the cap, you can do that with more than 60% in the case of a school district. Voters approving that. There are some exclusions or exceptions to the cap. So those would be like capital, capital expenses. There are certain rare exclusions, if there's like really large expenses that are out of your control, some of those are excludable. But the basic premise is we take last year's levy, which would be this year's levy, we apply a growth factor, the tax-based growth factor, which has to do with the change in the tax base, basically, brick and mortar kind of construction, new construction in the community. We add prior-year pilots, which are payments in lieu of taxes. It's a form of, you know, a substitute for taxes, property taxes. We deduct the prior-year exemptions. Those are the exclusions I mentioned. We have an adjusted prior-year levy, and then we apply the allowable growth factor. And so this is really the major rule in the tax cap calculation. It's the lesser of 2% or CPI. And so, we've talked about this as a potential problem with the formula, because if inflation is high, which it now is, and it has not really been high for the last 10 or 12 years when this has been in effect, you're limited to a 2% increase when the prices of everything may be at 8%, and they are. The CPI that was used to reach the 2% was, I think, 7.9%. So for a prolonged period, this could be a real problem with this formula. In other words, the cost of everything is going up at 8%, and you're limited to revenue increase, tax increase of 2. So we're at 1.02, 2%. We then deduct the coming-year pilots. We have our tax levy limit. We add in our upcoming-year exemptions or exclusions, which are mostly debt service minus any building aid, because it's mostly for capital expenditures, and we have our maximum allowable levy. And so it equates to 3.6 million or 2.8%, very close to what the allowable increase was for the current year, last year. And I just want to point out again that although the levy limit for us last year was 2.77%, we levied at 1.95%. So I think that was the third year in a row we've been below the tax cap. So I just wanted to kind of shift to the executive budget proposal for P12. So this is Governor Hochul's proposal. It's not law yet, but I think, unlike other years, this will largely probably, you know, go in as is. The state aid will be, you know, what she has proposed. The most notable thing here really is the first bullet, provides for a $3.1 billion, 10% increase in state aid. And most of that is foundation aid, 2.7 billion of that increase is for the increase in foundation aid. So that phase-in, that final third year of the phase-in. Other expenditure-based aids are largely intact, so we've talked about the expenditure-based aids that, you know, we utilize other districts do. A lot of the aid comes from spending money in this year and then receiving aid, almost like a reimbursement in the following year. So let's see, I mentioned the new foundation aid set aside for high-impact tutoring. So again, it's about 1.67 million for us, and we're watching that closely, but that's a new thing with the governor's proposal. The governor's proposal adds $125 million to expand pre-K programs. And there's also a reporting requirement, which would be dealing with the pre-K counts, both that we're serving and that we could be serving in the community. I've heard people opine that it will kind of shine a light on met needs potentially in the community, and sometimes the state does that. They make you report on something because they want to, you know, point it out or draw attention to it. The next bullet, zero-mission bus mandate reporting, that's similar to what I was just talking about, where we now, if you recall, last year's budget, 2027, all new bus purchases have to be zero-mission, essentially electric. By 2035, the entire fleet and all the contractors that we use have to be fully electric. So next year, they'll be making us report out on our progress. So, you know, cynically, you could say it's sort of one of those name and shame things. They want to see how you're doing, but I think they also want to know what kind of progress is being made, and if 2027 and 2035 are realistic, if they're even going to be close to being realistic as far as a deadline. But the kind of things we have to report on have to do with the electrical grid, the health of the grid, right? We're talking about that, Dawn. How are we going to have that information? I don't know. We're going to have to reach out to our utility companies. The, you know, the number of buses we've purchased, our anticipated purchases, how our contractors are doing, what kind of training we've provided to employees, what kind of charging stations we've installed. So it's this whole gamut of things we're going to have to report out on. I'm going to just skip over the next couple. Flexibility with the interchangeableness of the instructional materials aid. So a few years ago, textbook aid, software, hardware, library and materials aid, there's a prescribed limit to how much you can receive, and they changed the law so you could kind of reallocate those between those categories. So that's going to continue. Five-year extension of the school funding transparency initiative, so that is a reporting requirement that most agencies, ASBO, New York State, Association of School Business Officials, I think state school boards, they kind of said, really, this is unnecessary. It's like an unfunded mandate. It's something you're requiring districts to do, and nobody's using the information or looking at it really, as far as I know. Why are we continuing it? And it was set to sunset in this year, so they've done a five-year extension on that. And then finally, the retiree income waiver. So typically, there's a limit on what retirees can earn when working for a public entity, so it's $35,000. So they waived that through the, this year, it was going to be June 30th, 2023, that waiver would end, and they've extended it for another year. So that's all part of the executive budget proposal. Helps us with, right, recruiting staff. There's been labor shortages in different areas, so that was the idea of that. Any questions? Okay, so, this is a flow chart that provides a schematic about how foundation aid works, the foundation aid formula. And mercifully, I will not go through every box and line of this grid. But what I wanted to do is I wanted to put some actual numbers for our district onto this schematic, so we can see how our foundation aid was calculated, roughly, broadly speaking. And what I've done over here is I'm actually just showing, you know, the math, the steps in the math, and I've put some of these numbers actually on this schematic. So broadly speaking, the way foundation aid works is there's an amount of money, and I'm calling it up here in the upper left-hand corner, selected foundation aid per pupil, and that's supposed to be an amount to provide a sound, basic education for a student, multiplied by the number of students a district has. So that's sort of the most basic formula, cook it down to still this. Now, of course, the foundation aid per pupil is impacted by a number of factors, right? So it's adjusted. And so is the enrollment, adjusted by a number of factors. So I'm just going to walk through a couple of the factors. So I'm going to begin over here with this amount, which is called the foundation aid amount. So it's the base amount that the state uses with districts to provide a sound, basic education, $7,242. It's then adjusted by the Consumer Price Index. So this year, it's 1.079, it's 8% basically. So that helps us with our foundation aid. It accounts for why our foundation aid went up in some ways. And from there, we have $7,814, so that's the adjusted foundation aid amount. And then we multiply this by these two factors. So the first factor, pupil needs index, so that takes into account the composition of your students. If you have poverty in your community, you have more English-language learners. We can actually trace this down all the way to the bottom here, the lower left-hand corner, where we see this box is 2,000 census poverty. So that's a measure of the poverty in the community. We've talked about, it's actually using census information from the year 2000. So that's one of those things that we've talked about. What happens if they update that? Why haven't they updated it? Because it might send a shockwave through this formula. But they use the English-language learners as a factor and a variable. They use three-year average fripple, free and reduced-price lunch, and we often talk about that as being a factor in state aid, and then a sparsity count. So the sparsity count just has to do with, is it a rural community? You know, they tend to have more, greater needs. So we roll all of this up, and we see from Monroe Woodbury, our pupil needs index is 1.32. So we multiply this amount by 1.32. We next deal with a regional cost index. So for us, we tend to be in a slightly higher cost-of-living area, and one would sort of be the state average in most of these things, so we're at 1.314. And we get $13,553. So that is our adjusted foundation aid amount. We then deduct our local share, and the state has two ways to compute local share. The first method here is just $8,102. And then the alternative method, and you see here, this says lesser of, so it's the smaller number. And this is where we fit in. We're one of four districts in the whole state that this other method was more beneficial to us. So why? I don't know. But you basically, this is 1 minus the foundation aid state sharing ratio, that's what FASSR stands for. But what it comes down to, I'll just cut to the chase here, that our local deduction is $6,126. And we deduct that from the $13,553, and so our foundation aid amount is $7,427. So this amount is then up here, and then we multiply that by our total aidable foundation pupil units, and you see down here in the lower right-hand corner, we get 60 million- pupil units, and you see down here in the lower right-hand corner, we get 60 million, 657,534 approximately. That is our foundation aid amount for next year. So there, you know, you can go down any number of rabbit holes on this formula, but what I wanted you to see is the complexity of the formula. All these ratios and things have many, many inputs and factors, but we can see at a broad level, at a high level, how we got that number. Any questions?
No. You were very thorough.
Okay, all right. So I didn't want to blow everybody's mind, but I thought it was important to see how this formula works roughly, broadly. Okay, so this is our state aid run, so we've looked at these before. It's organized by county, and they give you a report for the entire state, and the way the report is organized is they show the current year on top and then the projection for next year on the bottom here. And what's notable is you see this increase in foundation aid. So we went from the current year, which is actually different than what they said we would be getting this year, last year, 45,076,000 approximately, to 60,657. And if we go back, we can see down the lower right-hand corner, that's our foundation aid amount computed and calculated. And then at the bottom of this state aid report, we can see the high-impact tutoring set aside. It's 1,674,000. So that's our state aid run. And the other thing I'd like to point out, I'm going to move ahead here. So here are, is our state aid for next year budget and our current year budget and state aid. And you can see here is the foundation aid, we talked about that increase. And one thing I would point out is you see this number, we budgeted 44.9 million because last year at this time, that's what they said we would get in foundation aid. But you see, if we go back, we're actually getting more. So there can be variations in the pupil counts, even little, little changes in some of those ratios that would affect the number. So foundation aid is the one state aid number that is probably, well, it's not the, there's one more that is not going to change. These other expenditure-based aids are estimates, really, and they're estimates based on what we thought we would spend in the current year at the beginning of the year. So in the summer, we made estimates. And so the BOCs aid, high-cost, private excess cost aid, these are for special needs students, those are based on an estimate with a state formula, but hardware, software, libraries, these are not really changing much, transportation's expenditure-based aid. This is the one form of aid, the high tax aid, which has not changed in, you know, probably 10 or 12 years. The building aid is based on, you know, what we think we're doing with capital projects, we're not doing much. Notice that this has fallen, and the building aid is frequently aligned to your debt service, right? So the idea is as you pay off your capital projects, you're receiving building aid, and this is one of those things where we, when we talked about the capital referendum, we're trying to line it up just right. So this is something we'd want to watch, that our building aid over time would start to decrease because we're paying off some of that debt service. And the final line here, I have MW state aid adjustments, 2.5 million. So we, slightly higher than what we, what we did, you know, for the current year, last year at this time. It has to do with, you know, like I said, some of the uncertainty associated with the expenditure-based aids, but also that, that high-impact tutoring set aside, that 1.6 million. We're not really sure where that's going to go, if it's going to be a big deal, or it has the potential to hold back some of our aid. So we made that adjustment, you know, to make sure we're covered and we're playing it safe and being conservative here. So the budget-to-budget change for our projected state aid is an increase of 14.6 million And so this is the budget triangle, which represents a balanced budget, which by law we must have. And it's just a, you know, a graphical representation of how our revenue and appropriations must be equal and how, based on our revenue and what we spend our money on, we have our instructional program at the base of the triangle. So right here, we're showing our state aid revenue, we just looked at that slide, 81.5 million. We're projecting our miscellaneous revenue, approximately 2.2 million, so the miscellaneous is, you know, things we, services that we provide, and we charge other districts for, sale of surplus equipment, et cetera. And then what I did is I put the current year tax levy in here, 129,74,000 approximately, giving us a total revenue budget of 212,855,030. And so if we just bring this across the revenue budget and compare it to the current year budget, the appropriation side, that represents $11,330,000 increase approximately, or a 5.6% increase. So again, we're not done with the budget, the state aid is not final, the appropriation side is not final, but this is sort of the big picture of where things stand right now, mostly looking at the state aid and the revenue side of the picture. And then finally, what I wanted to do is take a minute to go through the budget code structure that we use. When you look at some of the reports, you know, there's a standard format for budget codes in New York State for school districts, and it's the four, four components to it. The first is the function code, it has four positions. The next is an object code with three, location code and a program code. So function codes, these are the same. It's a, it's a chart of accounts in New York State amongst school districts. So buildings and grounds is 1620, we're going to hear about that in a minute. Security, safety, security is 1622, and so on. Teaching is a big one, 2110, anything with a 2 is instructional in nature. And then finally, transportation begins with a 5, 55 really, and there's, we're going to look at three function codes here. Object codes, anything that begins with a 1 is salary or payroll. Equipment is 2, 201, and so on, BOCs 490. And then location codes are specific to the districts. So from under Woodbury, 01 is the high school, 02 is the middle school, and so forth. And finally, the program code, the last four digits of your budget code are also specific to the school district. And they give us the ability to, let's say, do a query, and we could put 4,200 in for the program code, and we could see everything associated with the math program throughout the district based on that program code. So any questions?
Quick question. So the increase in state aid is driven by the inflation, the number of students we're getting, or the change in need of the students?
Well, it's, it is driven by the foundation aid program by inflation, you saw that, that one factor, but it's, I mean, it's also driven by the idea that that formula was being phased in, like fully phased in over three years. So like prior to three years ago, that formula was in existence, but the state, basically, they couldn't afford to run that formula and pay districts the money they were owed. So we phased that in, and so in, for next year, will be this final year, you know, that is fully phased in, and all the factors that go into that, that parts like the regional cost index, the need, student need index, all those things would factor into the increase that we're going to be receiving.
So it's phasing in, it's not necessarily that we have proportionally more students that are in need or a larger number. I'm just trying to assess the stress level on the school.
I think both things are happening, but I think the phase in is the much, proportionally much more important in the increase, if that makes sense. I think some of those other factors, I mean, the 2,000 census poverty, that's not changing. But the free and reduced price lunch, the triple factor, that is changing, that is increasing, we know that. I think our ENL population, that is changing, that is increasing. So there are district-specific factors which are driving it higher, but I think, I hear, I understand your question, sir. I think the bigger piece, the overriding piece, is the idea of just letting the formula run the way it's supposed to, and it is accounting for that big increase.
Has the state indicated when they would be looking at that census data that's 23 years old?
I've been in some, some meetings, Michael, where they have talked about updating that, and I think, and I'm sure they have done it. It would be very easy, I think, to just go in and say, let's just plug in some new numbers. And I think state aid decisions are always political, you know, we used to show that part of it would be, okay, upstate New York gets, you know, they normally get 12%, so they're going to get 12 and a half, and Long Island gets this much, and they need to get that much. So they, for years, decades probably, the decisions about the formulas were driven by politics and things like that. I think this sort of falls into that category. It might have, you know, big, create, I don't think it would be that big of a factor, but create shifts that would be, you know, difficult to explain. I mean, the one thing that is part of this formula is, is everyone is held harmless. So when you run this formula, there's districts that should get less foundation aid, but they held it so nobody would. Everyone got a minimum of 3% increase. So, you know, that's part of the political component of it. You're, oh, you got a formula, it's more equitable, it has better adequacy for foundation or for state aid, that's how it was supposed to be, state aid is supposed to be equalizing, right? Districts with greater need get more, with less need get less. So even that, you know, they compromise by saying everybody, no one gets less, and in fact, everybody gets 3% more minimum. So I don't know. I've been in meetings, I've been in meetings with the director of the analysis research unit at SED that looks at these things, and they didn't give us a real clear answer about why they haven't made that change. I think it's the, you know, the idea of what it would do and how it would shake that up, maybe is unpalatable.
Sounds like it. Are there any other questions?
Okay, so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Andre Rudak, who's going to walk us through the buildings and grounds budget.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to present the budget for 2023, '24 school year for buildings and grounds department. I would like to take a minute just to thank everybody in my department, from custodial department, grounds department, maintenance department, my office staff, and Kevin Kahn for supporting the district and myself throughout the year. With that said, we're going to go to staffing overview for my department. Before I go into this, I want to say that there is no physical change to the personnel, but there is some numbers changed. And the reason for that was there were some people that were paid through the transportation department, but they're really working for my department, so we changed the people where they are located for the department. So like you see in management, for 2023, '24, there is seven people in it, and this year it's five. And the reason for that is we have two couriers that are working from my department and reporting to my department, but they were paid through the transportation. So reorganizing that, those two people were moved into my department. For the custodial, it's the same number, 55.5. For grounds, it's the same number, it's eight. For maintenance, it's nine, but it was 8.8 because 0.2 was also for transportation, so we just moved that since they are working in my department to my department. So overall total for my staff is 79.5, comparing to last year was 77.3. But physical change, nothing happened, so I just want people to know that. So operational maintenance overview, the custodial staff cleans roughly 1 million square feet nightly. That's like having 333 houses, 3,000 square feet of cleaning, or six houses, 3,000 square foot per staff member. We have 229 acres maintained by seven grounds staff, or 29 acres per person. This is in addition to preparing the playing fields for school and community sports. With over 1,260,000 square feet, our maintenance staff preserves the district investment in facilities and contributes to the educational mission by ensuring facilities are comfortable, safe, and secure, which helps students, teachers, and staff to reach their potential. Projects that were completed in 2022, 2023 school year, middle school, there was a pool renovation completed with the new plaster, new UV lights, painting, and new bleachers were installed. Auditorium was painted and new carpet was installed. Outside, a new cafeteria picnic area was paved where students can go for recess or having lunch on the picnic tables. North Main floors were replaced in some classrooms, repair of the outside brick wall was done. Central Valley Elementary, boys restroom in 400 Wing was renovated, and the gymnasium was painted, and the new wall pads were installed. Pine Tree, some exterior doors were replaced, bus garage, some exterior doors were replaced. And the district-wide project was replacing all the door locks in the classrooms, so teachers can lock their classroom from inside without having a key. Projects proposed for this coming year, high school staircase number four, rubber stair tread replacement. That's the main staircase that is used in the high school from A level all the way down to D, it's four floors of stairs. Those treads are decaying and not really adhere to the floor as much anymore, so it's a safety issue. So it's roughly around $100,000 to do that, we're going to try to do that in the summer. North Main, we have some doors replacements, some in the bedrooms, some in the rooms, and also the classrooms in North Main, they have a carpet on the walls, so we're going to try to get the carpet off the walls and put the sheet again. That's roughly 56,000. Pine Tree, classroom 301, we want to replace the floor in that classroom. Sapphire, we have three classrooms that we're trying to replace the floor there for 42,000 dollars. And Central Valley, we want to replace some window shades, it's $30,000. It's not covered the entire building, but we're going to start somewhere and maybe continue year after year to replacing them. And the last is district-wide building improvements, $50,000. And that money is like for emergency, like a couple years ago, when we have a water main break at Smith Close, we have to pay for it somehow, or the sewer breakage or boiler, so we keep that money there for those emergency repairs. So we're going to go to buildings and grounds budget overview, which is 1620 code, there is subcategories in there, so we're going to go line by line through them. So 1,500 is a management, so we're proposing $175,000 comparing to this year, which was 102,000. That's an increase of about 70.58%. Dollar change is $72,470. The reason for that change is we have those bathrooms by the football field that we've got a lot of complaints about it, they old, so we reach out to some vendors, we get some estimates for renting and new bathrooms. So the goal is we keep those two at the end of June, and maybe over the summer, we will replace them with the new rental bathrooms there. The 1,600 code is the custodial code, we're proposing 439,000 comparing to last year, which was 386,000. Roughly, a percentage increase is 13.85%, which dollar value is $53,475. The reason for that is we want to buy some new equipment for custodians, but also the cost driving for supplies, the floor finishes, the paper towers, toilet tissues, liners, chemicals, all that is increasing as well. So 1,700 code, it's a grounds code, and we're proposing 259,000 comparing to this year, which was 218,000 dollars. The percentage change is 18.81%, dollar value is $41,026. The reason for that also is we have a one dump truck that we want to replace it, it's 2009 Chevy that has only 56,000 miles on it, but it's, has a steel body on it, and we're using for salting our grounds, parking lots and roadways, and it's rusting, it's kind of a safety issue, so we want to replace that. Also, last year, we kind of skipped mulching all our playgrounds, we were hoping that the capital project is going to go through, and we're going to replace the playgrounds, that's not happening, so we have to allocate some more money this year to re-mulch all our playgrounds to make sure they're safe. 1,800 code is a maintenance code, we're proposing 1,779, comparing to last year, which was 1,728. The increase is about 2.93%, which dollar value is $50,600. That's driven pretty much of the cost of any supply parts that we have to repair in our district. 1,900 code is improvement code, the proposed value is $300,000. This year's was 313, that's going down 4.15%, which is less $13,000. And I pretty much went through those when I explained what projects we're going to do this year. And the last one is 2,000 code, which is utilities. And I have to say on the front, the lot of utilities, it's really out of our hands, it's pretty much driven by prices and economy. We're using, in that code, we have electric, natural gas, water, trash removal, sewer, taxes. We're using outside vendor, outside company called EPEX, they're projecting our cost for electricity and gas, so pretty much we took their numbers, what they're projecting for this coming year, we put that in the budget. Our trash removal alone went up from last year to this year 57%. Last year, when we did the budget, the... Last year, when we did the budget, the bids didn't come in yet, so we were kind of estimating. When the bids actually came in, we were kind of shocked that trash removal alone went up 56%. Also, some people who are living in Woodbury, I'm sure they saw the increase on their water bills. I guess Woodbury did some improvement to their water system. We have five buildings that are using that water system. That's a high school, middle school, Central Valley, Smith Grove, and Education Center. And our increase on the water usage is none or very little, but what we're paying for it went up about 22.7%. So combining all those utilities, the change value from this proposed year, which is 3,213,000 comparing to previous year, which is 2,548, is 26.11% increase, which the dollar value is $665,384. Overall total, we're proposing $6,167,000 comparing to this year, which was 5,297,000. That's an increase of 16.42%. If you look at the dollar value, the increase is $869,955. But when you look at the column from top to bottom on the dollar increase, it's all driven by utilities, really. So budget goals for 2023-24 is continue to maintain a high level of cleanliness and maintenance, and maintain the capital investment in the district facilities and fields, and continue to work on the capital project. Whew, I hope I was quick. Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Have we ever looked at the possibility of solar power? I know, especially with the new funding that was passed, there's quite a bit of incentives federally, and, you know, $665,000 increase is not chump change, it's pretty huge. And I know it's market-driven, but I know there's a lot of commercial projects going on right now, so just figured I'd ask.
In general, we have. We have looked into it, and I think as part of our capital project, we would, that would be sort of the right time to do those things. A lot of times, you would say when you do the roof, you know, that's when you can put panels on the roof. In terms of other, you know, applications like solar fields and things like that, we haven't really considered that. It's more been about roof panels on a building with the new roof. And I think that would be something we would consider. We've also talked to our architects about an energy performance contract approach, right? So an energy performance contract is basically a capital project. You go to a vendor, and it's a capital project where the savings, it's largely driven by energy savings and improvements of that nature, cover the cost, right? So it's another sort of approach to getting some work done. We've thought about that as part of our, you know, in lieu of the capital referendum. But at the end of the day, often those projects, because those projects involve borrowing too, right? And they involve engineering studies and all those sorts of things. We can usually borrow at a lower rate than the banks or the companies that are managing those kinds of things. So if that were the only way for us to get some work done, and the thing with an EPC is it doesn't necessarily, it doesn't require voter approval. So it's, you know, it's sort of a different approach to getting some capital work done. Usually, the solar and the renewable energy projects are bundled into that kind of thing. So something we've definitely thought about, we will think about when the time comes.
What about long-term contracts? As a private homeowner, you can lock in your energy rates for a certain fee. So are there programs that will allow, let's say, prepayment with some sort of lock fee that will freeze the energy costs for next number of years or months?
Yeah, we participate in a consortium, and Andre alluded to it when he said EPEX. That is the company that they basically monitor and manage bids related to our energy consumption and procurement. And so it's natural gas and it's electricity. And we generally go two or three years as far as a lock-in price. And they looked at it recently, because we had some expiring contracts, and the market was not favorable to, and I can't recall if they actually might have done a request for proposal, like put it out there, did a bid, and the results were not good. So their recommendation was, this is a period of high inflation, energy disruption, we've got a hangover from COVID and supply chain disruption, prices are high, it's not the time to lock in. Because their projection was prices will come down, and that we have to ride this out and then go back to the marketplace for another bid or RFP, at which point, if, again, they analyze the market, if it was favorable, the prices were favorable, and they felt the market conditions were favorable, they would lock in.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Okay. Great, thanks, Andre. So next area we're going to cover is safety and security. Joe Tripodo is with us here. I'm going to walk us through this though fairly quickly, just because, you know, I think we're running a little long. So we've looked at some of these. These are operational objectives and tasks associated with the security department. So basically, they're there to support and assist building administration in providing a safe, secure, healthy school environment for students and staff. They manage and assist with arrivals and dismissals. They help out and provide support with athletic and extracurricular events. They operate the visitor management system, including screening visitors and, you know, monitoring and tracking visitors. Supervise congregate areas, so those are the areas, you know, primarily cafeterias, hallways, et cetera. Actively intervene when there's an issue or problems occur. Monitor the camera systems. By doing that, enables us to sort of leverage our staff. You can, one person at a bank of cameras with 12 cameras can dispatch somebody to an area if there's a problem, and they can watch that with the camera system. So they're a good investment. It's a way to leverage employees. And finally, review camera footage after the fact, when, if there's an issue that we need to look into further. So that's sort of a broad overview of what safety and security does on a daily basis. So just to jump right into the budget overview, what I'm showing, and we haven't done this everywhere, but I'm showing payroll information and non-payroll information on this grid, only because payroll is such a big part of safety and security. In the past, we used to do a presentation without the payroll, and the security budget was like 1.2 million, but we'd be showing you a budget presentation for like $50,000. So it didn't really make sense to not include that and continue to do that. So the upper portion here, there are four payroll budget codes. The first code is the clerical and administrative salaries. We have our sub and hourly salaries. We have our safety officer overtime. And finally, security salaries, those are for our permanent full-time people. So the one thing I wanted to point out here is you see there's an increase, a material increase in our sub and hourly rate. So we're going from 439,000 to 695,000, and that's largely driven by requests for and the need for additional safety officers and additional coverage. And we've put that money into the sub and hourly area because we have, we use subs and hourly, you know, part-time people to a great extent, because we have good flexibility with that and it's cost-effective. So we've bumped that number up. That corresponds down here, the lower left-hand corner, where I have a little FTE analysis, and you see the sub and hourly areas going from 19 and a half to 23, and that's a FTE count, full-time equivalent. That's what that number represents. So that's one of the cost drivers in safety budget. The other one has to do with our goal, our safety audit goal for this year, and some of the recommendations that may come back and have come back. So we've put some additional money in our security training line. We've put some additional money in our BOSI's line. So it was 4,600 for the current year, we moved it to 15,000. And we've also bumped up the security supplies, and also, perhaps most importantly, the security professional fees. So we increased that. There may be some consulting that we need, there may be some software that we need to buy. We know there's been recommendations about signage and training and communications. We've purchased radios. So there's a number of things that we're going to have to carry out, you know, to sort of enhance safety and follow up on some of the recommendations from that safety audit. So that's largely the increase in the sub-hourly rate line, and some of those other items are driving this overall budget-to-budget increase of about 12.9% in safety and security. The other thing I would mention, in the lower left-hand corner, as far as the staffing levels, no change to administration or clerical, no change to the contracted officers, so that's full-time, 17 to 17. I noted the increase in the sub and hourly FTE, and then the SRO, FTE is still seven. So it's one SRO in each building, that's unchanged for next year. So any questions on safety and security?
I have a question. Where is the SRO salary reflected in this overview?
So that is here under professional fees. So we're going from 581,000 to 655,000. So that includes, that increase includes, you know, sort of a cost of living increase for the cost of the SRO. They're largely paid. Six of our seven SROs are part-time safety officers that cover, one, a full-time position. So there might be two part-time people that cover a building five days a week.
So they're in their top budget code, 2100, health and safety salaries?
They're in security and professional fees, right here, Dawn. So it's 1622, 429, 092100, right here. So 655,000 is where the SROs are. And so six of our seven SROs are covered by part-time people that I just talked about. And then for Village of Monroe, one of the SROs is a full-time police officer with the village that works full-time at our building. So they tend to be a little more expensive.
Substantially higher number than the rest of them, so maybe should be a little indication that it does include the SRO salaries in there.
Sure. So right here under the fees somehow indicate that?
Yes, I thought when you spoke earlier, we were just chatting a little bit, that it was trainings and...
Well, the security training is here, so we go from 2,000 to 4,000. The supplies went from 15,000 to 35,000, and then, and then you're right, I didn't point this out, the SRO fees are in there, as well as an increase to cover, like I said, consulting fees, other things that we may, like for instance, let's say we buy a piece of software, and we need money to set it up, we need money for training, there's, you know, there may be other needs. So we did increase this as well. This increase is not entirely related to the increase in the cost of SROs. There's some money in there for additional services related to the safety audit.
And you did mention, I think, before, related to that number, that, yeah, there were recommendations that were coming from the safety audit that would flow into that, but they weren't specific yet.
Well, some of the recommendations have to do with better training for the staff, more consistent training for the staff, more consistency operationally. I know one of the things that they said specifically had to do with communication, so we're addressing some of that currently with new digital radios. We're getting hundreds of new digital radios and overhauling our entire system. Tanya? Mulrad is handling that project with Joe Tripodo, so that's a heavy lift, so we're doing that. We're doing that with some federal money from the ARPA money. I know the recommendation, some of the recommendations had to do with signage. In other words, having consistent and clear signage where almost every classroom would have a number, and I think the recommendation is that it's on the inside of the classroom, so if there's a substitute teacher there and they say, oh my God, I'm in room, they don't know the room number, they can see it. And then we can also see it from outside the building, is that true, Joe?
Outside, on the windows, all the windows have had the room number on it.
And then better signage inside as well, you know, a different size. So that's one of the recommendations. So it runs the gamut, you know? We could get, Joe and I have discussed these things, an alarm, like an alarm system where people could carry, have a fob, and they could set the alarm off, you know, or have this on their phone. So there's a lot of different things, and again, it goes to the feasibility of some of the recommendations, the cost of some of the, the effectiveness of the recommendation. We'll have to evaluate all of that. And I don't know if there's anything, Joe, that you wanted to add to that piece of it? We've covered it. Okay, good.
Just a quick question. Can you, what is the difference between 161, 165, and 429 lines?
So this line?
Mm-hmm.
This line?
Mm-hmm.
And this line?
Right.
Okay. So this line, professional fees, is paying for our school resource officers. So in other words, it's like a fee, we're buying a service. And as I said, I also, we also put some additional money in there to cover, you know, services that we may need for next year related to our safety audit. This is covering, this is a payroll line, so the object code begins with a 1, that's how we know that. And this is covering our part-time people. So our sub-safety officers, they're part-time, they're not necessarily there every day. And then this line, 165, security salaries, that covers our full-time people, civil service employees, you know, 35, 40 hours a week, full benefits, they show up, you know, eight hours a day. So it's just different budget codes to track the salary and the people independently. More, you know, it's more granularity, so we can see where are we budgeting people, how much are we spending, et cetera.
I got a couple of questions, too. So one, I'd like to see the report that they submitted for us.
The assessment?
Yeah.
It's still in draft, it hasn't been finalized?
Okay, when it's final, of course, please, appreciate it. Do we think the people that we're going to hire are going to actually be able to do that? So I know recruitment and all that is difficult, and keeping people is difficult, no matter what field you're into. So we think that we're going to run into that issue? Or are we confident those extra officers we're going to hire or security is going to be attainable?
I think we'll be fine.
Okay.
Budget, assessment, recommendation.
Great. And then I heard you mention radios. So we're purchasing new radios or push-to-talk or whatever?
We're going from analog, which we have now that are barely operational, to digital. North Main was the first school to get them. They do have parity during digital radios. We are, Tanya, I'm just finishing the project now, we're programming all the ICOM code. We're looking to put two new repeaters into the middle school, which will cover middle school, high school, and Central Valley Elementary, and the rest of the group will go with several repeaters in those schools. And that should be, we're hoping to get radio level, I'm trying to be optimistic for the graduation, but I hate saying it, not having it all come through. The first part of that, we'll probably have 48 radios and two repeaters put in as soon as we possibly can. We'll go into the middle school, and then most of the other schools are hurting, so we'll take those radios and cannibalize them, kind of like surpass them after the schools are functional, till we can take four or five.
I just know that's a costly and time-consuming problem.
This radio will run on a district network, so we had done some work on testing the, we have different altitudes on different buildings. So as Joe mentioned, we set up the two repeaters, test this, and North Main was our first building. It is expensive, so, and I know Tanya and Joe, they're looking and working with all the administrators to make sure that, do you really need to carry a radio? Because it's not a Best Buy or we used to go around, it's not a Best Buy radio, this is a expensive radio. And this also will significantly improve today's district safety plan.
And if the network goes down?
It will have, it will have a capacity to run on the repeaters.
Okay, perfect.
But it's a significant training, and it's a massive project that will soon be undertaken.
Having been a part of it for the Army, I completely understand.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I'm going to pass it on to, yes.
Thank you, everybody. Technology budget is really a collaborative effort. The process starts in November timeline, and really starts working with the department chairs, building administrators, directors, ultimately my colleagues, folks in the business office, and then to Mrs. Rodriguez. Some of the technology initiatives are all aligned directly to the district goal. Earlier this year, Mrs. Rodriguez presented to the board a variety of different district goals and how they are strategically aligning to our strategic plan. All the district technology initiatives are aligning to all these district goals. Majority of them are on student focus. Majority of them are on student focus, and that's really the, the purpose of producing the variety of different initiatives. How are we impacting our students? Technology is a tool, and it's only good when we use it correct. In last five years, it's been a journey with minimum technology to no technology, to full-blown technology, to pre-COVID, during COVID, past COVIDs. Now we live in a chat G P D or Dolly E I world, right? A I world. So it's been constantly evolving, but again, it's a tool, if it effectively used by our, our teachers and, and staff member ultimately give a phenomenal return on the investment in Mr. Kale's world, word, um, to our students. Some of the technology initiatives that, that we've been working or have worked, um, are, are here on this page. Digital den, digital den is an attempt to convert our old computer labs. During the COVID, when we went to one-to-one, we had a, a golden opportunity to, to look at our old way of computer labs, which was a pre-wired machines in, in rows and, and, and columns. There's a great author called, um, Dr. William Daggett. He has done some really amazing work on learning spaces. So we took some of the ideas from his work. We visited some of the, some of other school districts and, and institutions that were ahead of us, using the learning spaces as how are we kids, how are the kids learning today? Are we designing the space for kids' future or are we designing the space of our past? That's very powerful thought. And so the initiative was done pretty much at the North Main. Uh, big thanks to North Main team, uh, the TAs and a computer teacher there. And the goal is, what does this old computer lab looks like in the new environment? So we have converted that, if you have not visited, I highly recommend to visit them while the kids are in action. The goal is to, moving forward, take every building's computer lab and ultimately change them to the digital den, basically a flexible learning spaces. High school student technology help desk, this is our second year of a student help desk. We have about ten current juniors and senior students who would come down to the high school library and work with the technology department team members and ultimately learn what does the computer world looks like. Uh, high school administration and working with Dr. Hasler, have, we have done a really good job of, for a variety of different courses. We offer currently Intro to Coding, we offer, um, AP Computer Science Principles. But to me, in our mind, it's more learning from the book. This really gives the kids a hands-on experience and ultimately prepare them for the college and career readiness. Not every kid may go into the, into the cybersecurity or into the computer world, but this allows them to just get enough basic knowledge of troubleshooting, no matter which field they go. This will be a very basic requirement. Um, working with the, with the high school at Miss, Miss Soto and Dr. Hasler, we are, actually are proposing two new technology-related courses. One is cybersecurity, uh, part one, and a web design. We have the course request out there and we will look at the numbers when the course request comes back and then see where we are and can we offer this course to our students. We continuously, uh, support our parents and students who cannot afford, either they do not have the internet at home or cannot afford the internet at home. We have certain Wi-Fi's that we purchase through T-Mobile and we do provide that support to our students. We continuously, uh, implementing one-to-one district, uh, device rollout. Any students who register for our district would get the, the district device from there. Currently, we have ninety-nine point two-three percent of districts, students, um, has a district-assigned device. Smart panels, um, we, we are in our fifth year of replacing the old smart boards, uh, which is a little bit older technology, with the smart panels. This allows the instructional leader of our teachers to stay in front of the, the panels, but then also work with the kid, kids, students in a really live environment. We have completed the replacement of the smart boards in all K-five buildings in last five years. Next two, three years, our focus will be replacing the middle school and high schools' uh, smart boards with the smart panels. E-Rate, uh, E-Rate is a federal fund, um, it's called educational rate, um, and, and it really based on the district's free and reduced data. It provides the districts a, a specific amount of dollar amount to replace certain backend infrastructures. We applied our first, uh, phase of E-Rate, well, one of the first phases of our E-Rate was about five years before. This is where we coupled our smart school funding and replaced a lot of backend switches and, and wireless access points in every single classroom. It's about the time that we plan to replacing our, our network switches. Network switches are basically a communication devices that allows to connect the, the bits and bytes of the data that flows from a student Chromebook all the way to google.com or chat G P D dot com. That infrastructure upgrade is a part of this budget. Every five years, we apply, we used to apply every year and kind of pay the BOS's, uh, support fee. We figured out a better and efficient way to apply every five years that allows the district to, to basically take the chunk of that money and really invest in the infrastructure. As for this budget, for this five-year cycle, we are qualified as a district, one, one million and ninety-five thousand dollar. We are at the point of sixty percent E-Rate, so sixty percent will be paid from the E-Rate federal program. The remaining four hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollar needs to be budgeted in the district general fund. So I'll discuss in the next couple of slides, um, uh, how that budget, how we have budgeted that four hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. One of the big, big, um, this is what keeps me and the department at night, the cybersecurity. District, uh, stakeholder trust us and provide us a variety of different data to us, variety of different information to us, whether it's a child date of birth, the address, social security number of staff, and we take this extremely, extremely important. Uh, this is always the front and center of, of our initiatives, no matter what initiatives we take. We are a part of an organization called M S Isec. It's a multi-state, uh, information security analysis center. Um, in fact, we are actually representing one of the K, two K-12 in the entire nation. We have a seat on the table to, to, to shape some of the funding, and, and we follow their best practices and best standards to the T. Um, the, the cybersecurity, basically, it's everyone's job. It's not just a technology department job. And, and we have, this is a journey, and we are doing some good work in this journey. Again, the work is not done, it's, I, I always feel like it's just the beginning. Every year, we master something, there is something new comes up. But, but this, this slide is a representation of a holistic approach of how do we defense and put the resources into the cybersecurity. It starts from the bottom up, host systems and application defense. Majority of our systems are cloud-based now. In last three to four years, we have pushed all our applications in the cloud. That allows us to maintain what, what's left internally better, but also allows the, being partnered with the right vendors to support these systems, not only from application side, from, from a cybersecurity side. We, we do a constant network monitoring and defense. We have a sensors like Albert in place. This, this sensors triggers any anomaly that sends into the traffic. If the bad actor is following a specific pattern, these sensors are designed to follow the pattern and match the pattern and triggers an email and a text message and a call to us to say, hey, there's something happening. Similar environment, a similar logic in perimeter and user and data defense. We implement the C I S controls. When we roll out the new computers, we, what we call in technology is hardening the image. We try to make sure that when we roll out the new technology, it's secure from day one, not once it's in place of the, in front of the user. And the last, we continuously monitor geopolitical threats and, and what's happening in the real world and see the cyber threats around, not only just around us, but also the nation. There are some nation terrorist states that impact our, our cyber landscape and, and sometimes, and there's a big political announcement, all of a sudden in a week or so, we see a big attacks on the different networks. But again, it's a constant process and it's a journey. Some of the other initiatives from a district, uh, ed law, uh, from New York State ed law two D compliance piece, we, every year, we complete the national cybersecurity review. This is a self-assessment review, but this allows us to monitor a progress for us, where were we last year or a year before and where are we today and what area that we need to improve upon. This is the review of the NIST cybersecurity framework. Email phishing campaign, um, up to last year, we were only doing the phishing campaign for staff. Mrs. Staubert had a great, great point last, this time last year in the presentation, that what about the kids? And that has shaped us, our thought process a little bit differently this year. Anyone who has an email address, whether it's a staff or students or, or substitute or student, um, student teacher, they are, we are actually using them as a phishing campaign. We change our company last year to this year. Last year, what we learned from working with the different teacher leaders is when we sent out the phishing campaign, they, they used to print out the, hey, this is the phishing campaign of the month, and they would post it on a teacher's bulletin board. So everybody would know that. So it kind of gave us the data, but it wasn't really the real-time data. So this, this time, we changed the company, the company name is InfoSec. And, and what it does, it, it, it creates, it gives us about seventy-five different email templates. So even if we print out five, that doesn't mean you are getting, getting the same five templates. So it gives us a better way of phishing the staff, and ultimately, it's changing the human behavior. We are only strong at the, our weakest link. And that's really the, the, the attempt. Our, overall, our, our phishing rate is a little higher because it's a new tool and it's actually a lot more sophisticated tool. It's a, just above seven percent. Our goal is to, for this year and ultimately, ultimately, next year is start bringing it down to right around six point five, like, a little bit under seven percent. Uh, the industry standard is about eleven percent. So we are okay, we are decent, but we can be better. Mandatory cybersecurity training for all staff, so thank you all the board members to keep up my emails sometimes after second, third reminder. But this is another area that, that we are really good. If you're a new staff member, you have a two to five days, and we are very diligent in just disabling your account. Sometimes we get some nasty calls, but this is again protecting our information for our own purpose, that not allowing anybody to fall through the crack. In fact, this is the, one of the most, uh, written-up area in recent cybersecurity audits from the state controllers. We, I, we have reviewed in last couple of months, I reviewed six different audits from the controller's office. This is the one area that they are picking up, that how you are doing at cybersecurity training and not just sending out an email and saying, okay, one and done, but constantly monitoring who has not completed. So it's a lot of work, but I think it's a well worth of our investment. Continuously monitor and update our disaster recovery and incident response plan, it's an ongoing process. Um, we, we are getting better and better in varying the various different software, the data privacy agreements. It's all, it's all, depending on the day, sometimes like, we feel like it's just a legal side of the data privacy. But it helps us to be better and basically protect the students and staff data that the folks are trusting us. Um, as I mentioned earlier, last year, we did our NIST cybersecurity, uh, assessment. They have given us a fourteen bulleted points of certain improvements that we need to do. We are, we are, we are definitely ahead of that implementation roadmap, but it's work in progress. We have done, I would say about five, six of, we're working on the sixth one, uh, implementation. But again, it's a two-to-three-year project. Implementation of our ed law two D compliance, we use a tool called Symmetric. This allows us to, to monitor our own progress in a specific way in a compliance process. So if, if three years down the road, we can see what happened in year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, we can see that this is where we started, this is our journey. And, and our last year, board approved a district strategic goal, and as a part of the district strategic goal, one of the goal was selecting and implementing central depository system. We are well underway, we have connected many data points, we identified actually two more data points, working with the various stakeholders. So we are working with the companies to bring that data points into the unified insight, and then goal is to roll it out for our teachers before this school year ends and ultimately go full-blown next September. Preliminary technology recommendations, so twenty-six thirty core instructional, um, that code is thirty-three point four-six, four-eight percent higher. Now, out of the dollars difference, six hundred and twenty thousand dollar, four hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollar is what I explained to you earlier for the E-Rate. That's a one in a five-year, um, investment, and then based on that, we get one, close to one point one million dollar. Um, all the remaining codes are, are either pretty much close to zero or reduce. Every year, we work with the business office specifically for these two codes, twenty-six thirty and sixteen eighty, and making sure that we are maximizing BOS's aid, as well as we are budgeting to where it's supposed to be budgeted. And so there is always a, a growth in, in, in this budgeting process from a technology side as well as from a business office side. But it allows us to, to be a little bit more efficient than year after year. So there is a, there is a decrease in a sixteen eighty code. It's not because we're not buying stuff, it just, we are appropriately coding where it's supposed to be coding. Again, go back to that thirty-three percent increase. If, if we take out that four hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollar that I explained to you for E-Rate, the entire budget increase is one point nine percent, just to give you in the perspective. So even though it's a thirty-three percent, it's, the four hundred and thirty-nine thousand is just for one and done E-Rate funding, next year will be back to normal, but it's, it's basically one point nine percent increase. Uh, technology staffing level pretty much has same. Um, we have about thirty, we have phenomenal thirteen team members who support a lot more technology, um, and it stays this year, and we expecting the same staffing level next year. This is the technology at the glance in the district. We have a variety of different technologies, and, and we pretty much run the whole gimmick from smart boards, smart panels, projectors, various Apple devices, the one-to-one Chromebooks, one-to-one iPads, um, wireless access points, servers and switches. So we have close to eleven thousand and five hundred devices between thirteen team members. So the industry ratio is, is two hundred and fifty device per person, but overall, these thirteen team members are phenomenal folks and, and do a really good job. We log our help desk tickets, um, and the purpose of doing that is allows us to improve our own performance, also allow our clients, which are our students, teachers and pa, and parents and administrators, to see the response time. Twenty twenty, uh, and this is last three years, um, and, and you see the big difference, twenty-one, twenty-two school year, this is where we started, the student help desk and, uh, parent help desk, along with this, uh, walk-in repairs. This is a directly related to the student Chrome, one-to-one student Chromebook. So we are well, or around seven thousand, like last entire year, we had about seventy-one, seventy-six requests. Um, I would say we will be close to about seventy-three, seventy-four hundred student requests. And just to give you some idea of, this is just the, by the month. Generally, in September, when everybody comes back, that is our busiest time, and then it kind of plateaus from that point on, and then right around this time, it starts picking up, um, and then ultimately kind of dies down over the summer. I'm also presenting the library budget, um, working with our phenomenal librarians and library coordinator Laura Lerner, along with Dr. Hasler from instructional side. Board has given us an opportunity in last five years to, to design this library also as a flexible learning spaces. Our first library, um, change or, 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 or renovation was in two thousand and eighteen, and first library was Sapphire. In last five years, we have completed a library to, a, a lot more flexible learning spaces for all K-five buildings. Next year, it's going to be middle school. This allows the students and staff flexible seating or various maker space areas, um, quiet room, if you are at the high school, there are a couple of nice quiet rooms or or small meeting rooms areas on the left side as well. The bottom pictures are basically just the, the renovated library at the Central Valley. Um, library media, uh, we also monitor the circulations, that's another way for us to see how are we doing. We can buy the electronic book license, we can buy the books, but are the kids really using it? And, and here is an attempt to show you, the circulation has continuously increased. Twenty twenty-one was a, a COVID year, so you see a drastic change there, but overall, year after year, we are increasing the circulation, uh, for our library content. This includes the print, electronics, DVDs, you name it. And that's pretty much it.
Any questions?
Yeah. One, is there any part of the budget that's being used to train teachers on how to identify when kids are leveraging chat G P T?
There is a discussion on, uh, along with the tech coaches, um, but there are two thoughts, and some districts have blocked the chat G P D and, and we have not, uh, and, and we need to learn and embrace the technology, not to block it. I always give an example of my own kids, it's, I would rather teach my kids how to drive sitting next to them versus one day, they're just going to steal the key and start driving. So while they are with us, let's embrace that change with them, and we have some really good English and humanities teachers are embracing that, and we'll see how it goes. Um, it's definitely impacting how our teachers are teaching, but I think overall, it's a positive impact. I have not personally heard anything negative, along with the line, and, and there was a big, big news item that New York City blocked chat G P D on a district-assigned device. Guess what? Almost every single secondary kids have their personal phones.
Phone, yeah.
So why block the, this is my personal opinion, why block the technology? Why don't we learn the technology? It's a tool, we just need to learn how to use effectively and work with our teachers on how to use effectively, not just to block it.
Okay. So we haven't worked with the teachers yet to identify how to use it?
No, there, there, so tech coaches have started rolling out that, that piece, definitely, but it's not a formal training. The way our tech coaches works, it's like you can, I can book a tech coach, and then how have him or her walk me through a specific topic. There were some topics they gave about chat G P D, majority from the English department, because that's right now impacting them. What I'm hearing from the different teachers is a couple of teachers saying, use that chat G P D as a draft first and second draft, and then let's work on your real paper, which is, to me, was brilliant. Like, bring the technology into the classroom, use the technology, and not everything you see on the A I tool is accurate, because they are still learning from a natural language. So how, this is very similar when Google search engine came few years before. It's not just copying and pasting from Google search engines or the results that you see that. What is the content is telling you. And, and big kudos to our teachers. It's not perfect yet, but we are making some progress in that direction.
Okay. Thank you.
Just a follow-up question on the phishing, because you, you mentioned it specifically. What do we do?
What do we do proactively and reactively for the students? Do you make them aware that what phishing is and then if they do it, is there any follow up?
So we we we, the the positive impact, it's a different way of saying the ransomware was, we figured out how to communicate with the staff a little bit better. We have what we call MCC updates for staff. So until last year, when the students were not part of this equation, we always communicate through MCC staff. We actually have a Crusaders, Crusaders, MCC Crusade Crusaders chat. But don't quote me on the exact name, MCC Crusade Crusaders News. And that's for the students only. So we communicate with the students, not pre or post, but we communicate with them. If there is a big threat that is on a, that is impacting Snapchat or impacting Instagram, we try to communicate with them with this particular way. The other piece is also when you fail the, the way this is the info sex works, which is brilliant, is there are different layers. When you fail the first time campaign, you have a thirty second video to watch. But when you fail the tenth campaign, let's talk. We're not there yet, but that's really where we want to go. Lot of students, what I see them is they're actually failing, but they're also quickly watching thirty minute, thirty seconds video to say, where did I fail? This is the same same logic applying to our staff. There was a concern from a staff member, it's like, I don't want to watch ten minutes video, but it's not really, it's a, it's a very small video. And it's directly impact showing you what exactly it's wrong. The other important part is the same thing is applying in our personal life. You get phished no matter what email address you have. You can have your personal Gmail and guess what? If you're not paying attention, your by, your personal banking account can be compromised. So it's helping not only students in and and staff in the educational environment, but their personal life as well.
That's excellent.
Right, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Good evening, thank you for allowing me to present the transportation highlights for the twenty two, twenty three, twenty four school year. Thank you, Mrs. Hawk, for that beautiful bus picture. It is fantastic, we love it. We'll begin with some transportation developments. So we started the twenty two, twenty three school year, this year, with contractor bus assistance for six Monroe Woodbury home to school routes. But through employee recruiting efforts, for example, Drive the Bus event, which we held in Saturday, on Saturdays in April and October. And then the driver hiring incentive and then the driver, driver referral program. Those recruitment efforts coupled with the financial incentives allowed us to fill the six driver vacancies. So by mid October, we no longer were, we no longer required the use of contractor assistance for our Monroe Woodbury home to school busing. Unfortunately, since then, we've had our share of challenges and we've lost three routed drivers through resignations for various reasons. We have two routed drivers on long term leave, so we're back up to five vacancies at the moment. Absentee amongst the bus drivers remains challenging. We have an absentee rate of about seven percent or six drivers per day. At the highest points, we have eleven plus drivers out on any given day. And we have, with the driver deficit, we've got, so we've got five open runs. We've got four regular substitutes who commit to us every day. Then we have ten limited availability substitutes, which those ten people may be the equivalent of four substitute drivers. Because they're subs and they choose to work on call. So with that being said, those ten limited, even though they're limited availability, we still needed to train them. And training, all the new training efforts, there's a lot of new regulations. And it costs about ten thousand dollars to get a driver behind the wheel now. So those ten people that we trained, that that's equal to about a hundred thousand dollars in training. And so we have to continue to recruit. Recruiting efforts are vital and retaining people is also as vital. Oh, we have another Drive the Bus campaign coming up. We just, we're setting a date with Mrs. Spenley and we'll be, we'll be announcing that soon. So the transportation personnel budget. So after adding contractual and longevity increases and reallocating some codes to different areas. For example, Andre spoke in his presentation about the the two positions that were moved from transportation. Because those people are technically from the buildings and ground side. Those positions that were in our budget, transportation, hundred and twenty one thousand five ninety eight, those were moved over to buildings and grounds codes. The McKinney Vento or homeless students, we don't have the resources, meaning the drivers, to cover those runs. So those McKinney Vento students, their transportation was relocated to to the contract transportation piece, which you'll see later on in the presentation. And in addition, we had one retirement of a bus mechanic, a long time bus mechanic. And he retired and because we have reduced the size of the fleet, we we did not fill that position at this time. So of the six million two hundred and ninety six thousand five hundred and forty one dollar budget has decreased two percent to six million one hundred and sixty thousand four hundred and thirty two dollars. So with contract transportation, we have our cost drivers. So this chart illustrates the Yeshiva school population growth over the past couple of years. We are estimating, predicting approximately fifteen percent growth for the twenty three, twenty four school year. In addition, the the high cost transportation area, which would include the BOSI's C O S R, mostly including the kids that attend out of county programs. That went out to bid, the the vendor decided not to, not to extend that bid. And that was after our budget was already set for for last year. And so BOSI's went out to bid again. And the the C O S R, it was significantly higher than had been anticipated. I want to say we calculated, I went over with Tanya, it was approximately twenty four percent more. And unfortunately, the C O S R service, they don't have the resources to adequately deliver the service that our students require. So the struggle to that, and it's, it's not for equipment, it's the driver situation for them as well. But they can't deliver the service, so our students still have to get where they need to go. And we need reputable contractors and because of the lack of the closer capacity, we have been forced to go out to bid with other vendors. And the rates are just much higher than they've ever been. So and also I had discussed this in the previous slide, the McKinney Vento students, we have the McKinney Vento students. When I say that, I don't mean the kids who are relocated within our own district, we cover those. But this is students who live outside the district, sometimes far outside the district, who are, you know, we're still required to transport to this, to Monroe Woodbury. So this pie chart illustrates the breakdown of the contract transportation code of eleven million one hundred fifty five thousand three hundred and sixty three dollars. You know, just pointing out the three, you know, higher. Okay, so three highest sections of this would be the high cost in C O S R, which is our out of county transportation. Our other non public schools and our non pub, public Yeshiva schools being the biggest portion of that budget. Transportation expenditures, parts, we continue to see increases in the cost of bus parts, sometimes up to fifty percent more. So you would think, well, the size of the fleet is less, but the price of the parts is more. So, you know, we're, we're still required to keep even the oldest bus in top notch running condition. And sometimes we have supply chain issues. We could have buses in the parking lot waiting for one part for months on end, just waiting. So we're still struggling with that. And fuel, good news and bad news. While it was wildly fluctuating all year long, it seems to be stabilizing a bit. And the prediction for next year is, you know, that it will, it will remain stable. So that is the goodness. So the increase in the budget was fourteen point eight three percent in overall. So was from sixteen million five thirty nine, four fifteen to eighteen million nine ninety one, nine twenty one. And you could see here that, you know, that was largely, it was driven by the contract transportation code. Our school bus safety poster contest was a huge hit again this year. We have some big surprises coming for you when we do our accommodations night in May. So I'll give you some more information, but we do have a one student who, her poster is on its way to the national level at this point. It's really exciting, we love it, they love it. And it's, it sends the message of safety, which is the biggest part. We do have really talented artistic children, but it does have the safety messages number one for us. And finally, I would just like to thank all the people in my department, our dispatchers, the mechanics, the drivers, the attendants, our trainers, the clerical, my assistant Jesse. And all of these people play such an integral role in the safe transportation of our most precious cargo. So thank you. And any questions?
I have a question. Since we have so many vacancies, have you reverted back to contractors?
We have. No, no, not for the home to school. What, how, I'll, I'll tell you how we cover those. So, you know, we, we, we have the DEFCON four or five, you know, I know if you know, we have a military guy. So when the dispatch says DEFCON something, you know, it means everybody has to push forward. Yeah, no, we do. And so all the dispatchers, they all are licensed and are are able to drive. So our dispatch staff goes out to drive. We have somebody in the office who also can drive. We have our trainers who stop training and go to drive. And then Jesse's usually at dispatch because I would rather drive than do that. And yeah, because then the best part about the job is being around the kids, right? Because the best part and, you know, and that's how we get through a rough day. And there's been a lot of rough days. And so, you know, we can make it better, you know, we, because we don't want to have the work contracted out. It's difficult when a contractor is doing the Monroe Woodbury work. And the reason is, is that, you know, we don't, we're not on the same radio system. So you might have a couple of contractors parked at a Monroe Woodbury slot. And now, you know, our parents call for everything, they love us, we love them, you know. So they'll call us for the littlest thing, you know, and we can't answer the question. Because we, you know, we don't have contact with that bus driver personally. So then they, you know, it's, it's just a very complicated and long and the parents start to worry and then we start to worry. It's, it's actually better when we have the home to school runs. The ones that are contracted out, we know who to call and when and they know, you know, it's just, it's, it's just better. It's better to have our own staff covering our own routes.
Sure.
So, so that's our goal. I'm going to be working with Mrs. Hawk a lot.
Do we know why there's so many absentees?
You know, during COVID, it was really tough and we see waves. We see the stomach virus right now, you know, it's going through the classrooms and those kids are on the buses. And then now it's the stomach virus and then we get through that sometimes. It's the flu season, then it gets really, you know, COVID, it was just bad all the time, every single day. Now we could have two absent or twelve absent, we don't know. But the dispatcher spent a lot of time looking ahead at what, you know, what's the next day? What's the next day going to bring? What's the worst day of the week going to be? What's the hardest day, you know, and and we just, we make it happen every day, but.
Do we have any projections going forward for the amount of non public students we're going to end up transporting as the years go on? And what we could do to mitigate the costs associated with that?
Well, we, we've been, we've got our arms around somewhat. We, we really have worked very hard to get our arms around the projecting, the growth, excuse me, the growth. And it's, it's just very difficult. Because if you take a ride, you can look around and, you know, we don't get out as much as we should, you know, because Jesse and I are in the office a lot. But the other day, you know, we took a ride, we had to go towards Washingtonville for something work related. And we just were in awe of the, because we don't always get out to get to the far ends of our district and see the growth. And so sometimes I'll call my counterpart, Judah Spitzer from K G O F S D. And we'll talk about growth and what does he think and what is he predicting? And, you know, so we, we have a lot of factors. It's what's happened over the years historically and then it's.
The, the one thing I was going to mention is, so we have engaged the BOSI's in Long Island, Suffolk BOSI's to do a demographic study for us. So I'm going to reach out to them and and actually mention this idea that we're seeing this large growth in contract transportation. It's non public servicing, non public students and just see how they handle that, if they could, if they're not already taking, like they're, they're probably not, because it's enrollment for our district. But if they could help us understand that and project that out in a more scientific way.
I mean.
Right, now you asked about controlling the cost too, I think.
Right.
Yeah.
I think that also goes back to what Mike said about queuing the the census data. Because that type of population growth is above and beyond what you would normally see in census samples, I guess. So that would be another reason to requeue and to see if this is something that can change.
Would it be wise to reach out to a neighboring district that might have a similar situation and see what they've seen in terms of increased size over time, increased population? That requires non public transportation.
Do I think we should do that? Is that what you're asking?
Oh, it, would it be, would it be a good idea just to see what they've experienced?
Well, we have done that, right? I mean, Dawn, you want to speak to about how you're in contact with colleagues, right?
Yeah, colleagues, you know, in the East Ramapo area, even Lakewood, New Jersey. I've spoken to a company that's hired to, not P T S I, it wasn't, it was, you know, we reach out to companies that, you know, help you make sure you're being efficient, like an efficiency study almost. And ask, you know, how did they, how did they handle this? Because I know that sometimes they'll hire outside sources to help, you know, with those, like do efficiency studies.
Yeah, I, I think a lot of times, and we had, we had reached out and we had engaged P T S I, which is one of the firms that does consulting work for an efficiency study and some other things. And COVID occurred, right? So and I think I spoke about this, a lot of assumptions and things that they were working with just all went out the window. And it, we didn't really get a good final report from that. But it's can be something that we, you know, look at again. I, I think our situation is somewhat unique, it's not entirely unique, right? But, you know, P T S I, you know, they, they're, they're a statewide organization, but they're based around Syracuse, I think, upstate New York.
Right, and a lot of people, they really don't know. There's very few resources in that area and they really don't understand.
Right.
They don't, they don't even know what that means when you say, but when you talk about the population growth and how that's happening, they, they don't understand. So it's very.
There is retrospective data, you can look back twenty, thirty years ago and see what happened to the population and try to draw some conclusions based on that.
Well, I could tell you this, I've been here thirteen years now. And when I came, we were transporting forty six girls, forty six. And now we're transporting two thousand students to those schools. So that's over a thirteen year period.
So is it better than, I mean, as I was saying, fifteen percent, it was eighteen, almost eighteen and a half before, and fifteen percent next year? To me, that makes it sound like it's slowing down and I just haven't seen that. So is it more like?
I know, well, we, this was, we, we discussed this a lot, Patrick and Tanya and I. Right. Right, so what, there was a period of time where I think transportation was being provided, even without us realizing, to kids who hadn't registered in the district. And so now we've got the families are really, they know that they have to get their children registered with the district and the registrar and provide everything. And they know about the April first deadline.
There's deadlines associated. There's deadlines associated with that, and we're more strictly enforcing those deadlines, and, you know, we have a more...
Right, so, so...
Is it a dual registration because of the registrar and it's for transportation?
So, I just want to say, what has happened is that we've put very stringent and specific protocol for any student, right? So, if anyone is coming to the district and requiring any kind of transportation, we have a very strict process in place to ensure that any student who is registered in our district that is entitled to transportation receives it. And so, we've done that work with our registrar's office, which has really helped us take a look at, you know, actual data to allow us to make some predictions. So, that has really helped us over the last couple of years, and we have an idea. Now, can we, with one hundred percent accuracy, determine that? The answer is no. But we have some accuracy, some data that we use. And in addition to having this study done, which we will also reach out to a school district like East Ramapo, I think we're going to, it's going to take multiple groups of people to really give us better accurate data. Because I don't think that a typical school study that any school district would have done would help us. We would need to modify that with additional services. So, there's multiple things that we've done, going back to, again, having a more concrete, specific, protocol-driven process for people to register in the district so that their children can provide, whether it's a parent whose child is going to go to our school or a child who's going to go to an outside district placement. We have very strong protocols, and we are in contact always, well, Eric is, because Dr. Hassler oversees that, is in contact when we have a question. So, we make sure that all of our processes are in place, and so that if someone receives transportation, whether it's to a private school, to our district, to an outside agency, they are enrolled in our district. And it gives us really good, better data. But we will have to do multiple things to get an accurate study done.
Yeah, I think that makes sense, because just, I was just saying, it's not in here, obviously, you didn't put fifteen percent here as part of your voiceover, which is fine. But it's kind of like people's ears are going to perk up, like, oh, it's slowing down. But when, really, it's fifteen percent is a swag estimate, I would call it.
Correct.
It's not, it's not to be accurate.
Correct, yes, yes. It really is.
It could be twenty percent, we don't know yet.
Right, or twenty-three. Like, we all had a different idea.
We don't know.
Yeah, we all had a different idea what it was going to be, but...
But thank you, it makes sense.
The other efficiency increase we have done, we have connected student management system and transportation system, so big thanks to Dawn and Jessie. So, these are not silos. So, they are live, connected, and the data efficiency has been much improved because registration is the only person does the data entry, and she has done a really good job of changing this system process, vice versa.
Great, thank you.
We had to deny transportation, you know, to a lot of students who didn't apply on time this past year. And we sent our applications out nice and early this year, and we've been following up. And even the Hasidic contractors have been reaching out to parents to remind them, you know, because people forget, you know? You put it on the side and you just forget, so...
And that April first deadline is not a Monroe Woodbury, it is a state.
State.
The state requires you to put in an application if you move in the district by April first. So, that is not our district.
Or, if you, if you purchase a home or move into the school district after April first, you have a thirty-day window. If you don't, if you don't register within that thirty days, you have to wait until the subsequent school year in order to be able to do it.
Do we have a per-student cost for the different populations? For Yeshiva, how much is it costing for the high cost, I think you put in one? And then for the home routes, I think you call them...
I think we're twelve, I want, I can confirm for you, estimating twelve dollars, seventy-six cents per student for the two, the bigger groups. And then we have one, the smaller population of Yeshiva schools are Congregation Benayewal, and they're on a cost-per-bus basis. And they're much smaller, but they're more spread out, you know? So, we authorized, there was a five buses for them, and then this way, when they had growth, they were going to fit on those buses that we agreed to, where the other contractors are getting a cost-per-student. And with the CPI, it was six point three percent, you know? So, this was our first year of increasing those, that dollar amount.
To go back to Jupre's question, was that cost per student across different types of transportation delivery, or just...
Really, I'm just looking to see what the difference is. So, you know, the kid that's just going...
Yeah.
Obviously, the kid that's going a few blocks, is riding on the bus, is likely cheaper than the kid that's going far out to the district, right? So, I'd like to just see what that difference is. At some point, we're going to have to somehow, some way, a smarter people than me, figure out the cost as we continue to grow, which we all, I think, feel this is going to happen. So, if the law, you know, if we can be ahead of that and figure out what we need, what levers and...
Are you asking about public school costs, like, public school students, and then maybe non-public school, and then maybe closer, like that? Okay. Yeah, we have that. Sure, yeah, yeah.
Right.
Okay, sure.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hey, just to follow up on the absenteeism that you've noted, is that, like, in historical percentages, or is this something new entirely these past couple of years?
No. When I was hired in thirteen years ago, again, we had fifty sub-drivers, five-oh. And that's the one thing that jumped right off the paper at me. And I said, and Ken Daubert, he said, "Don't touch it." And I know, you know, that's, you know, they were needed. But also, remember, we had nine, ten, eleven, twelve athletic trips on any given day. So, you were covering athletics. And because the drivers contractually would get the trips, so you're covering, now you're covering their run, so you're having twelve, you know, so you needed twenty sub-drivers on any given day just to cover athletics and then absenteeism. And then, again, those subs aren't available every day. But we did, we literally had fifty sub-drivers in addition to the hundred and ten routed drivers. Now, we're down to eighty-four routes in district. That Monroe Woodbury driver's drive, we had one hundred and ten in the beginning, but, and we had fifty sub-drivers. And every day was like sunshine, you know, because we just had enough, you know, plenty of staff. But now, we don't. You know, so it's times have changed.
There's spare capacity in the system, right, to absorb any issues or extra demands that come up.
Right. I mean, there was even a time where we had drivers on the outskirts of the district for those emergencies, and they happen. Buses break down, things go, you know, things go wrong, and we just had a driver ready and perched and ready to go, and kids never waited more than five minutes to, and at the end of the day, if somebody wasn't outside, quickly, because they were stuck in the room with their teacher, or they lingered too long in the hallway, we could scoop them up and bring them home. I'm not saying that's the, what we want to do, but I'm just saying we had the capacity to do that. And now...
You don't.
If you miss the bus, you better call your mom. Yeah.
It's not a Monroe Woodbury issue, right? It's an issue in pretty much all...
Oh, it's a nationwide problem. It literally is, it's very challenging. And right now, to be honest, we have contractors that are in our district, who reside, their operations are in our district, and they're paying a lot of money. They're not getting the same benefits that Monroe Woodbury drivers are getting, but if you think about a retiree who doesn't need those benefits, they're, they've got their benefits for the rest of their life. They want to make money. They're young, they're retired, and they want to make as much as they can. We're losing those people to contractors who are paying way more. So, there's got to be a balance, I know, but Lori and I...
Do we offer any incentive for, let's say, a retired person who has their own health insurance? Do we offer any incentive for them to work with us?
No.
Maybe we should. We're not paying healthcare for them.
It can't be in the retirement system once they've retired, too. So, it becomes, it's a, it's a little bit of a, you know, the increase in the cap, that helped us, the thirty-five thousand...
The waiver.
The waiver, I'm sorry, the waiver.
Yeah.
But then, they increased the waiver for security to fifty thousand dollars, did they not? So, that hurt us again, because, well, I would drive a bus for thirty-five thousand on work for security. You know, they're retirees. So, now, we lost them too, because, yeah, so it's been, thanks, Joe. Yeah.
I saw that comment.
It's tough, it's tough. It's a tough situation, but we're not going to stop trying.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
Any other questions? I want to thank you all very much for the presentation. It was very thorough, well-done, lots to absorb. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. We, gosh, we're sorry.
I just want to note that during the presentation, Mrs. McCleary had to leave at six fifty PM, but we still have a quorum, so we're going to keep moving the meeting forward. One note, the Orange County Arts Council has beautiful art around the sides of the room. They hosted their Arts Build Confidence Showcase on Saturday, February eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three, from ten AM to five PM in the center court on the lower level of the gallery mall. This event featured an exhibit of Orange County high school student artwork and a digital display of elementary and middle school, which is also on display up onto my right tonight. So, I just wanted to acknowledge their providing us this wonderful art tonight from the council. Okay, we're up to approval of minutes. May I have a motion to approve the February eighth minutes?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Action items. Are there any questions on the student calendar for two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four?
Based off of BOSEs, I'm assuming?
Very, very similar to BOSEs. I think the difference between the district and BOSEs is that we typically give, I believe it's the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, and they do not.
That's very nice of us.
It is very nice of us.
And I think at the end, I saw one eighty-six plus one. I don't have it up, so that's a memory pull.
Yes, one eighty-six plus one.
What's the plus one?
One eighty-five.
One eighty-five plus one?
Make eighty-six, one eighty-six, and that's for...
My memory's a little off.
The one is the superintendent conference. This year, we're going to have one superintendent conference at the beginning of the year. We typically do two.
Okay.
But because school starts on a Friday, and then Monday is a holiday, and then school starts on Tuesday, we felt it would make sense to just do one day.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? May I have a motion to approve the calendar?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have a resolution to approve participation of another student in the Menasink Valley High School trap team. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Personnel updates. Ms. Hock?
Thank you. I respectfully request approval for the items listed under personnel.
Are there any questions for Mrs. Hock? Ms. Hock, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Committees on special education, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Reports by Board of Education Committees. The Audit Committee, we don't have a meeting, it's coming up soon, I believe, in March, so there's no other updates that I have there. Policy Committee, do we have any updates?
Our last meeting was on February second, and we're not meeting again until March ninth, so, no, there's no updates at this time.
Thank you. Visitation?
Nothing new.
Okay, and then Board of Education Student Rep Search, Jamel, did you have any updates on that? Or do we get any applicants yet? Okay. That's all I have. And then we have reports by Board and Central Office. I'm sorry?
We have three applicants.
Oh, I didn't, oh, sorry.
Oh, we have three.
We do.
I missed it.
That's great.
We need more. We need more students to apply.
Agreed.
Yes, if you can hear that at home, please apply for the student-born representative.
They get to be my boss.
We have this month promoted.
That should be the line item, be else's boss.
On the website, on the social media, we're going to do the morning show.
Should be the line item, be else's boss.
Still have a whole month.
Okay, we have a whole month, but don't wait till the end, get it in now. Reports by Board and Central Office. Barbara?
Just a thank you to everybody that worked hard on the budget presentation. It was very comprehensive and easy to follow, and I appreciate it.
Dr. Koifman?
It's great to be back, thank you. And I would like to second that this was a lot of work, and it was presented in a very palatable fashion. And I also wanted to extend congratulations to the Monroe Woodbury Swim and Dive Team. Again, they've honored us with another win this year.
Excellent.
First, I'd like to thank everyone for an excellent presentation. It was, as Dr. Koifman said, very, very comprehensive. And I'd also like to welcome you back.
Thank you.
I attended Captain Louis Junior on February eleventh with my grandson, who had already seen it earlier in the day and couldn't wait to tell me what was coming up next. But it was a lot of fun. And now, I'm looking forward to seeing Willy Wonka at Pine Tree, and the Socrate Cafe also at Pine Tree, looking forward to that, and the High School Musical. So, there's a lot to look forward to, and have a good evening, everyone.
Yes, well done, Patrick, with you and the entire team that did all that. Congratulations to those folks that are retiring coming up. I see Brian Giudice over there, so congratulations to him. The drama stuff is awesome. I love going to all of it. I look forward to the Pine Trees and North Vanes and all those coming up, and the Middle High School. Have a great, safe night getting home.
Everybody, have a good night.
Thanks for the great presentation, Patrick, and your team. It was very well done, and I know you put a lot of work into it. Sergey, thanks for coming back, we appreciate you being part of the group again. I attended the Central Valley Book Fair just before coming here, and that's an awesome thing. And have a great night.
All right. Definitely a lot of work, work that I would not have ever been able to do, so thank you. Much appreciate it. Dr. Koifman, I'm so happy to see your face again. Putting that out there. And Dawn, I just want to put out there, I've heard a lot about you from multiple board members, all good, I promise, that's why I'm saying it in public. So, nice to hear you speak, and I can feel your love and your passion for your career. So, thank you very much for that, and thank you, everyone, for your input to the presentation. So, thank you.
Thank you, CV Admin, for inviting for the PARP. It was amazing fun, it was really good fun to read the fifth graders about the book of my recent visit to India, so that was really good. So, thank you for the invite.
Thanks.
It's championship season for our athletic teams, and I just want to say good luck to all of our teams who are participating in either sections or states this week or coming up this weekend. We do have a lot of teams and a lot of individual athletes who will be competing, so good luck to all. I, too, want to recognize Brian Giudice for his anticipated retirement. Congratulations on an amazing career, and enjoy every last minute over these next few months.
You want to, you want to become a bus driver?
The initial part of Patrick's presentation said that they're continuing the salary waiver, so...
The beat goes on, yeah.
For another year, so...
Two and a half, option.
Condolences to Maura Burke's family. We had the resolution earlier on in the Board of Ed meeting. I had the privilege of working with Maura for six years while I was principal of Central Valley. It is truly an understatement to say that her dedication to the district touched many lives, and it was a very sad and unfortunate loss. The year that I was hired at Central Valley and started working with Maura, I actually was hired at the same time that Brian Giudice was hired. Brian and I worked together for a year, so fifteen years ago, it's unbelievable. Congratulations, Brian, good luck to you. Good luck to you. Uh, welcome back to Dr. Koifman. Uh, I attended the, the, a bunch of things, but the middle school kaleidoscope and the high school prism concert this year. Uh, they were fantastic as always and I always put in a shameless plug that if you did not go this year, please, please, please put it on your calendar next year. They are outstanding, outstanding events. Um, thank you to the middle school team for their preparedness as well as our directors in hosting today's Crusader Chat. It was great information. If you didn't have an opportunity to be able to attend, the, the link is going to be posted on the district website in order to be able to, it's already up on the district website, so you'll be able to watch it. Thank you so much to Carolyn Prudence. Um, and finally, good luck to our Odyssey of the Mine teams this weekend who are going to be competing, uh, at Orange Osterbosy. So good luck to all of those teams.
So after you're done watching the middle school virtual Crusader Chat, you can go back and watch the elementary one from, from February 9th if you haven't seen it already. We have two musicals on the same days, so since, um, we have Pine Trees doing, um, Willy Wonka, they are March 10th and 11th. North Maine is doing Matilda, they're on March 10th and 11th as well. North Maine is held at Central Valley, so if you could figure out all of that, um, we just hope you, you show up. Captain Louis was great over at Central Valley and it's always nice being the first one because it's super exciting, but it's also nice when you're done. So congratulations to, to the team over at Central Valley. Welcome back, you know, Dr. Koifman, it's, it's nice to see you and thanks to Patrick and everybody who presented. And, um, you know, Brian, this is, this is, this is a cool thing for you and your whole family. This is a, a, a chance for you to do something else or different or nothing and, um, but you'll have all those choices that you get to make in, um, a, a lot of years, a long career, a lot of time spent in education, a lot of, you know, positive impact on the lives of kids. So thank you for your time here and, you know, your time doing everything else. So congratulations.
So, uh, I'd just like to thank and acknowledge our buildings and ground staff for coming in at 4:00 AM yesterday and clearing all the snow and getting our schools ready for students today. Heavy wet snow, so it was difficult to push and blow and shovel and all that sort of thing.